Real call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
President.
President Protim Gerson.
Present.
Counselor Trask.
Present.
Counselor Gorley.
Present.
Counselor Coleman.
Present.
Counselor Sanchez.
Present.
Counselor Richards.
Here. Let the record show, we have seven present, no absent. At this time, will you do the live stream agenda?
Thank you to everyone who is joining us. For members of the public who would like to participate in this meeting, we have some instructions to help you if you are new to using Microsoft Teams. Notice the icon in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. The second one from the left is a chat bubble icon indicated with the yellow arrow. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak, please choose the bubble icon to enter into the meeting chat. It will appear on the right-hand side of your screen. First, enter your name, address, and phone number in the chat, followed by the topic you wish to discuss. If you wish to speak at any point during the meeting, you can choose the hand icon also located in the upper right-hand corner, indicated with the green arrow. It is the equivalent of raising your hand. Then, the mayor, acting chairperson, or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We'll give everyone a few minutes now to enter their name, address, phone number, and topic they'd like to address with the council in the meeting chat. We will ask, in the interest of time, that people not repeat a previous speaker. Instead, state you agree with their point or disagree with their point. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Any extension of that time is at the sole discretion of the mayor or the meeting chairperson per council rules. The moderator will note these joining by phone for the mayor or chairperson. The fact that the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior. The mayor retains the right to have people removed from the meeting as stated in the council rules.
Thank you. Before we get started this evening, I was saddened by some news today of the tragedy in Texas. Gun violence is unacceptable and it's very, it's a huge tragedy, no matter what the age is, but the loss of lives today was just very saddening. So I'd like to ask a moment of silence for them. Thank you. Consent agenda.
Set moved.
Second.
Move a second, but real call, please.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Protim Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Let the record show, we have seven ayes, no nays, approval of the consent agenda. Moving on to recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions before we go on to the recognized visitors this evening, any citizens like to come forth, be heard before council? Okay, I'll start off. We have a new fire chief, name is Nick Tyler. Would you like to come forth and introduce yourself? Up here, all you, get up in front here, buddy. Lots of. Don't just hit the green button. Welcome. Push the button.
Hello, Nick Tyler, thank you. Now that I got to the right seat and the microphone.
Tell us a little about yourself.
I wasn't prepared to, I wasn't prepared to speak. I was unprepared. It's good to be back in town. I started in Sweet Home, at Sweet Home Fire in 2002. I worked there for about five years and then decided to move to Lebanon and worked in Lebanon Fire for the last 15 years. Moved up to the ranks there and Dave's retirement opened up a very interesting conversation and we decided to apply for that job and move back into town and very happy to be here. So, week one is under the belt and we're working on week two now and learning, can you hear the drinking water through a fire hose? And that, that was week one, so week two's a lot slower. So, just very happy to be back in town.
Well, welcome back to Sweet Home on the Sweet Home Fire Department.
Thank you.
Proud to have you on it.
Thanks. Oh, I care.
Thanks, Nick, welcome to Sweet Home Fire.
I have a question really quick. I have a serious question. Since you came back home, I thought I would ask you, what do you love most about Sweet Home?
Um, that was a question we kind of mulled around for years, right? Kind of, I left and went in the Navy after high school and kind of decided at that point, you know, back in 2001, do we want to move back to Sweet Home and stay in that small-town feel and raise our family there or go somewhere else? And for us, it was just the environment here. We, you know, attracted to come back and even working in Lebanon, you know, we continue to live here and, you know, this is home and it's a beautiful place. You know, I've got to travel all around the world and the country and there's no place else I'd rather live, so.
Thank you, welcome home.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Welcome, Nick.
Thank you.
Looking forward to having you in the department. Moving on, OCW COG Countywide Data Report. We have a gentleman, Ryan Voig, here tonight. Come forth.
We're in business, you're gonna be on. Thank you, Mayor, good afternoon, council meeting, I guess. I'm Ryan Voig and I am the Executive Director for the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments. I've been the Executive Director only during COVID, so I wanted to, now that we're getting a chance to get out and move around a little bit, come and introduce myself. Counselor Sanchez sits on our board and has some experience with the things that we do, but one of the things that we've not done historically as an agency is provide any kind of data about what it is that we do. And from a council of governments, they're spread all over the nation and each and every one of them does a very different footprint in terms of services. So this year, we put together a little bit of a county report to give you a sense, if you aren't familiar, or to refamiliarize yourself with some of the things that you all and the other membership agencies are asking us to do on behalf of local government throughout the Lynn Benton and Lincoln area. Our utmost hope is that next year, we're able to produce reports that provide data at the actual member jurisdiction level. I'd love to be able to come and say, this is how many Meals on Wheels, meals we provided in Sweet Home, or this is how many seniors and people with disabilities that are being served in a residential care facility or currently receiving supplemental nutrition benefits or what have you, hoping that we can get there next year. But I did want to just come and put a face to a name and give you a little bit of information. We sent that electronically, I do have hard copies here as well in case any of you wanted that. And I'm open for questions. And then I also wanted to bring our new Tech Services Director, Jason Sealy, to introduce himself because, as you know, we also have a as-needed tech services contract with you to come and provide technical support in case you have problems with your tech services.
Yeah, and I'll mention too that we've been trying to line up things on, right?
Yeah.
Now it's on, oh, green on.
See, none of your stuff got recorded.
Oh, I didn't say anything that good anyway.
So, my whole focus of being here is just to let you know that we do provide those tech services and we're available for you to support any of the techniques that you have. So, work at the COG and been there for all of six months now, so.
Okay, any questions of counselors? Well, thank you for all you do and thanks for coming this evening.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you for having us.
Have a good evening. Next up, we have, we're very honored this evening, we have some students from the Sweet Home High School Woodshop to be recognized. And so, Mr. Will Coltrane, come forth.
I'm Will Coltrane, I'm the Sweet Home High School Construction and Woodshop teacher and I have Casey Galoney and Connor Lewis Con with me tonight. My construction class has been working with, I forget your name. FAC and the Rotary Club and we've been building some of the homeless huts for the city here. I submitted a video, I don't know if you guys got it and watched it or not, but there's a video kind of of the product that we've been doing so far. So, these are two of the students, but I've got 30 students that have been working on it daily for the last two months. Absolutely.
Hi, I'm Kayleen Zajic. I'm in the woodshop with Mr. Coltrane and we are building huts for the homeless people. And my part in building the huts is I'm building the bed frames by measuring and cutting out and putting them back together. So, that is what I'm doing today.
My name is Kendra and my part of this project was staining and painting the deck. Stained it for the weather.
So, we have a sawmill here at school. We mill all of our own two-by-fours, six-by-fours. Everything that we need, pretty much just have a book that we go off of. Take the measurements and we take every piece, cut them, put it all together and get a final product. To cut our two-by-fours, we use a table saw, chop saw, and then we'll set it at an angle for some, some of the pieces. We'll set a 22-degree angle and we're using an air operator, nail gun, to put it all together.
So this is one of the decks that goes on one of the shelters. Right now, it's being stained. This is one of the walls that is getting ready to go on one of the floors. This is one of the storage rooms. We got stands to set the floors on, which is this right here. That's stained, all that's stained. This is just ready to be put together. So basically, what we had to do is, we ordered sheets of plywood and it took about a week to cut out these pieces right here. As you can see, these are all separate pieces. So we got this side piece, that side piece, and then we cut out these pieces right here. And basically, we just got them all cut out and ready to go and we stored them in our storage room over there until we're ready to go. It feels good that I can actually do something for the community here in Sweet Home and I'm actually getting experience while doing it. You know, I can take this into the real world after I graduate high school and who knows, maybe I can start my own construction company or join a construction team or. There's a lot of cool things that are going on and a lot of skills that kids can learn through this project. And it's a great service learning project that we're working in cooperation with. The Rotary Club and the city, there's another nonprofit organization that is kind of overseeing this. This is completely funded through third-party grants and donations. It's not coming out of the school's budget, it's not coming out of the city's budget. It's a community-driven project, which is good for the kids to see and good for the kids to be part of. Got hog paneling, got the cart on all the corners, hog paneling hung, everything's stained. I mean, it teaches us from how to redetate measure to working with people. It's kind of nice to be able to build stuff like this and be trusted to build it. And you're expected to work, so that's what we all do.
Very impressive. Any counselors want feedback, real quick?
Mayor, if I may, I went down and saw them a long time ago, actually, when they were just putting the pieces together and it, it seems like it's come a long way. And, and it is a good chance for you guys to learn some skills. Anyway, I appreciate it. It's gonna be a big deal for the city and you're absolutely right. It's a, it's a good thing.
It's wonderful to see our, our students engaged in such projects and lifelong experiences. I'm just proud to be on the council to, and humbled to have you here today. Thank you very much.
I just want to say thank you for all you guys have done. It means a lot, it's nice seeing the community step up and do a lot, so thank you.
I'm very proud of all the individuals within the woodshop. It shows that they pride ownership they have for their community and the life skills that they gain from it. Words, I'm lost for words in how great these kids are and they've done a phenomenal job and thank you on behalf of the city of Sweet Home.
I think the word is impressive.
Thank you for giving back to your community and doing it so well and for coming back and letting us know what you're up to. Thank you, keep it up.
So I just get really excited when I see kids working really hard and thinking about what they want to do with their life in the future and thinking about how they can make their community a better place. Thank you for all the hard work that you guys have put into this, you and your team and the teacher.
Once again, thank you for coming this evening. There is some refreshments for everybody to enjoy back here on behalf and thank you again, once again, let the entire woodshop students know.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, any others like to come forth, be heard, or counsel this evening? Now moving on to old business. This next topic caught me way off guard. And I'm probably gonna get emotional myself. For our family, that really caught us off-guard. Didn't see it coming, but, you know, for years of service for our family, whether it was my father, my mother, or myself, we've always just looked at giving back to the community for our, for our services that we've done for our community because the community's been so good to us. We've never really looked for recognition, so it caught us off-guard. I brought the, this matter to my father, who's probably the last remaining counselors during the time when the first wastewater treatment plant was being built. And he reminisced about all the challenges we had in the funding, just like we are having now. Also, the challenge was, back then, was the annexation of Foster and Sweet Home at the same time. And that was huge back then. Our family is very humbled and honored by this recognition. I want to thank the council and the city for the recognition. There is a process that needs to go through. Again, I'm just humbled and honored by even just the recognition. So at that said, I will move on to our city manager, Worcester, to take over this matter. I will have to abstain from this because it is from a biased position. So, at this time, I'll let you take over.
Yes, this recommendation came from our Public Works Department, actually, and the dedicated staff that work for our wastewater division. The Mahler family has selected the name Mahler Water Reclamation Facility and that's the name that the city staff is recommending that the facility be renamed or be named to in the future. Our packet on page 33 includes a resolution and that resolution, if you desire to move forward with that name, we would be asking you to make a motion this evening to direct us to proceed with the application process. And part of that process requires that we also post this for the public notification and we hold a public hearing following 30 days. So this resolution is in draft form tonight. We would be looking for a recommendation to move it forward to the public for notification, official notification, and a public hearing to be held one month from now. And the resolution does spell out the contributions that the Mahler family has made to this community over the course of several years through both their public service on the city council and to the fire service. And the resolution also acknowledges the dedicated public servants who run the facility. Because, because of this name change, we're really bringing to the forefront the modern technologies that provide the reclaimed use of that, the effluent that is, comes into our plant and then goes back and is discharged into the river and creek. So, it's just my pleasure to present this to the council tonight for consideration and our proposed motion is on page 25 of your packet. We're requesting that you direct staff to proceed with the application and include a public hearing at the June 28th meeting.
So moved, as recommended.
Second that.
Oh, sorry, sorry, forgot. So, roll call, please. Julie, we have a motion in a second.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Let the record show, we have six ayes and one abstention.
Thank you. Moving on now for discussion only, FAC Managed Outreach and Community Resource Facility update.
Well, you've got part of the update already. Just to update from the last, from last month, city and FAC continue to meet once a week to coordinate the development of the site. Public work staff have begun rough grading of the site, both on the FAC property and on the city's easement. Fencing along the south side of the easement has been completed and so the public works yard is secure. Some development has occurred since I wrote this and the water line and the conduit for power and telecommunications are both begun and there's some pictures of that that was taken this afternoon. As you can see, that's a brand-new fence and then they're trenching. Water is the blue pipe on the left and then the, the other trench has power and telecommunications conduit. You can see there, the, the train, the old train depot is there and I'll get to that in a minute, but you can see how it's, it's in the way. FAC is working with a local contractor to schedule the transfer of the city hall annex building to the site. We have a permit in to my department for, for that. As directed by this council, staff are seeking community input and assistance and hint to anyone listening regarding the relocation of the old railroad depot building. It currently sits in the way. It's not hampering any work right now, but it will in the future and it will need to be moved in order to, to complete the project. As you saw in the videos, Sweet Home School District is generously helping. The students are constructing huts for the site and that's been very much appreciated. The school district also helped with the creation of that video and I'm in contact with the gentleman who was working on that so that we can have additional footage taken of the site itself and eventually, when the huts are placed, have those placed there. And we're looking for those who would like to be interviewed on camera to talk about the project. Staff are also assisting FAC with gathering applications for people interested in serving on the site policy board. The community, the community health committee will be reviewing applications and making recommendations to FAC's board. I believe we have one applicant so far and we hope to, we've put out the word and we're hoping to get many more applicants. So if you're listening to this, we could use your help. And finally, FAC is drafting, developing draft rules for the site that that policy board will, will then take on and modify once they're in place. So there's your update for this month.
Any questions of council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
You guys haven't gotten any information about the train depot? Are we still waiting to hear back from?
We have not had any.
Community members?
We've talked to a few folks and so far, we have not been able to get any help with the actual moving of the structure. Those we have talked to seem to be content with it being let go. We haven't had any, any offers of assistance or, those with expertise, we haven't been able to get any help with that yet.
Mr. Mayor, in speaking with our Public Works Director, Greg Springman, he indicated that there's a newspaper article that's gonna be out this week, so we may get more attention to the depot, draw more attention to the depot and this matter will be coming back to a future council meeting for your consideration.
Did you reach out to the new owners of the mill property, discuss the location to, to there?
I have not, but I will.
Thank you. Moving on, discussion only, Oregon Jamboree Council Updates. Robert Shamack.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Nice to see everybody. And I'm looking at Diane thinking, man, she just, she, no, she just said to those nice young gentlemen that it's impressive, so I'm really hoping that someday, before I leave this, this position, that she's gonna look at me and say, Robert, that's impressive. Probably not tonight, though. Well, where do we want to start?
Well, I'll let you just take the ball and run with it.
All right. Well, can I give you an update on Music and Brews?
Sure.
So on the Music and Brews side, it was an absolute success for Sweet Home financially. Probably not the best for us, but first-time events oftentimes don't go as planned financially. And we knew we were gonna probably not make a lot of money, but on our side, we have to look at it a couple different ways. It was great marketing for us. It's really hard to track every time we promoted the Music and Brews. We could see that our ticket sales would bump for the Oregon Jamboree. So next year, when we do it, we're gonna do some different promo codes and stuff so we can track it a little bit better. But all in all, I don't think we had any issues. The one big thing that surrounded it was, you know, the Rio Theater and with Thomas Bayham. I think it went extremely well. I don't, I don't know that he had any issues. If he did, he didn't bring him to us and, you know, and we invited him over and bought him dinner one night. So I think the Music and Brews went really well. Next year, I will absolutely not have it on Easter weekend. That was probably not the best planning, but. But that dang Easter changes up every year, so you never know. But, yeah, did you guys have any questions about the Music and Brews?
Any questions?
No? I didn't see Dave there. It was an old country. We had some good old-fashioned rock in there.
Actually, I had a lot of positive feedback from it, so.
Okay, good.
I think it did well.
Did it rain? It rained, it snowed, it hailed, the wind blew. I went through a lot of propane for heaters. But no, all in all, it was really well. And we've had nothing but great feedback from it. So, it was. Yeah. So, no, I definitely appreciate you guys jumping on board and helping us out. And it was a fun time. If we're able, we'll love to do it again next year. So. Do you guys want to talk about Jamboree, or do you want to talk about Tune Up Tuesday?
Well, I think there's going to be a lot of questions on Jamboree. So, let's go Tune Up Tuesday, and then we'll get into the Jamboree.
So, this year for the Tune Up Tuesdays, we're going to do them in June. It's going to be more of a lead-up to the Jamboree. Last year was, to be honest, it kind of just got thrown in our lap at the last minute. And we jumped on board to help out. And we ended up kind of taking it over. And it was in September, which was a lot of fun. But on our side of things, we want everything to be a commercial for the Jamboree if we're going to be involved. So, if we're going to put money into it and a bunch of time, we decided to do it in June this year. I've been talking with Blair, trying to figure out if we can do the maybe a crash course version of the street scape on Thirteenth Avenue. I'm pretty sure we put it in our plan in our event permit.
It's on the agenda next.
Oh. Well, what am I talking about?
Well, you can keep talking about it. I'm just saying it's going to come up.
Okay. So, yeah, so we're hoping to do it every Tuesday in June. This year, we're doing it a little differently. We're having full bands. But before the full band, we're going to have, I have one spot left on the Jamboree stage for this year. So, we're going to do a Battle of the Bands every Tuesday for half an hour. So, we'll take all the submissions. We'll pick four different bands throughout, you know, for the month of June. And we'll do a Battle of the Bands before the main act starts every Tuesday night, which I think is going to be a lot of fun.
Very good.
Yeah.
Now for Jamboree, and I know Diane.
I do have a question.
Start and go ahead.
I may. So, I was looking at the map on the Tune Up Tuesdays. Sorry.
Oh, that's fine.
And so, it shows the farmer's market on the Thirteenth, on Thirteenth Street rather than at the parking lot, or is it both?
Well, that would probably be a great question for Blair.
So, we talked about extending the invitation to them to join on, at that same location on Thirteenth. I have not been able to get in touch with the farmer's market. They have not responded to that suggestion. So, as far as I know at this point, they still are remaining in their original location.
Okay, thank you.
I think our thought process was if we could make a really fun day out of Thirteenth Avenue or, you know, anywhere, that the farmer's market would definitely benefit from having a couple extra hundred people that typically wouldn't go to the farmer's market. But whether they want that or not, I don't know. It was just a concept that we talked about that.
Okay, let's go ahead and hit the big topic.
All right, Jamboree. Thirtyth anniversary. Tickets are selling like crazy. We're pretty much a hundred percent sold out of campsites. So, we partnered with the Victors on the mill property and are opening up another, I mean, it's not known to the public yet, but it will be soon. We're opening up another one hundred and thirty campsites down on the mill property. So, we're pretty excited about that. But yeah, Jamboree is going to be big this year. I think we're going to set some records. We have our Thursday night street party that's free to everybody. We're going to be firing that up again this year, which has always been a great time. You know, we've averaged about eight hundred people on Thursday night. This year, I'm guessing we'll be closer to twelve hundred people on Thursday night. And, yeah, it's.
Do you have an idea what the intensity this year is going to be in the Jamboree?
Yeah, we'll be, yeah, well, so last year, we were sitting, depending on the day, between ten and eleven, which was, which was great because, you know, it was during COVID. But no, we'll be pushing sixteen, sixteen-five. So, for all three days.
Pretty good.
It's, yeah, it's phenomenal. So, and we have more campsites than we've ever had, which is going to be great for, you know, money back to the city. You know, our occupancy tax this year will probably be about, you know, twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. It should be, you know, just added funds to the city, which would be nice.
Go ahead.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
So, if you're going to put a hundred and thirty campers on the mill site, how are you going to approach the mill site? Through Tamarack? What will be the access to it?
It'll only be through Eighteenth Avenue. There will be, so if you know, like right across the railroad tracks, and we'll have plenty of signage, you know, don't stop on the tracks, all that fun stuff. But right across from the railroad tracks, basically right across the street from Lester Sales, that's where our main entrance will be. And then we'll have an emergency exit out on Tamarack. But there will only be one main entrance and exit. That's two cars wide or two gates wide.
Yeah, questions, the council?
And we're going to open up Sankey Park again this year. Last year, we used the play structure, which was super fun. And the kids had a blast on it. It's a great facility. But this year for Sankey Park, we're actually bringing in a larger stage. And it'll be right where the old pavilion used to be or the old wood structure over there. So, we're going to set it basically in the same place that that was. And, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be one party, one heck of a.
Do you have any added measures that you're going to put into Sankey Park this year? Just as curiosity, because we've put so much money into our park. Make sure it's not vandalized, the restrooms, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, so I actually have a security company that's going to be, I mean, not just monitoring Sankey Park all the time, but they're actually going to be staying in there overnight as well. Like, they're going to be sleeping in Sankey Park. So, the whole security team will be over there. And then we're going to be fencing off. And it's a hundred percent up to you guys what you want me to do. But hopefully, we can let the kids use the play structure. It'll all be fenced off. It'll be considered a kid's zone. We're not going to let adults in there to play. The Boys and Girls Club has jumped on board again this year. And they're going to be sponsoring the kid's zone. So, they're a lot of responsible people that are, you know, used to working with a bunch of kids. So, like, that area will be really under lock and key with the Boys and Girls Club. And they've always done a phenomenal job for us. The bathrooms, we typically don't open up the public restrooms just because we don't want any vandalism. So, we'll bring in, you know, all of our own porta-potties to use, you know, just to try to mitigate, you know, some of the damage that could be done. So.
Any other questions?
You know, one of my biggest concerns is one of the bridge. Archboard seating and it's just not necessarily jammed. It's got.
Yeah. Yeah. And the thing with the bridge is, in the last couple of years, well, in years past, we used to let people loiter on the bridge and they would sit on it. And it just got to be really dangerous. So, now we put screening up so they can't, nobody can sit on the bridge. We have security there all the time that are shuffling people back and through or, you know, back and forth. But, yeah, it's, and I've never seen any damage during Jamboree. But I go there year-round, and it's really disappointing to see what people have done to that bridge. Yeah. So.
One more question, Robert. So, will there be a beer garden in Sankey Park?
No, and yes. Well, a beer garden is considered an area that only twenty-one and older are able to go into. So, for the last two Jamborees, it's been an open container area, which OLCC actually wants us to do for the entire. Because they discourage a bunch of adults being together. They like to have families being commingled with alcohol and things for kids to do. As odd as it sounds, but that's their goal. But yes, it is, we're going to put it in as an open container area for the entire Sankey Park.
So, do we have to waive a few things about that, chief?
It's typically in the ordinance or the RCA that comes through the council to waive the no alcohol clause in the parks during the event.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks for the update and keep up the good work, Robert.
Yeah, well, we're excited. I already have a bunch of offers out for 2023. And I have one confirmation, which I can't say yet. But I'm going to tell one person in this room that he needs to come to Jamboree next year.
Thanks, Robert. Keep up the good work. Looking forward.
It's better.
All right. Moving on to new business, RCA Resolution Number Sixteen for 2022, Tune Up Tuesday Special Events Application BA Permit.
Okay, so as was already mentioned, Tune It Up Tuesdays is happening in June, the seventh, fourteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-eighth. This year, previously, it was in the parking lot next to the Rio Theater. This year, we talked about doing kind of a trial run. During our street scape plan process, Thirteenth Avenue is identified as a location for a festival street. And the intent behind a festival street is a street that is designed to be shut down on a regular basis for events. Now, the street hasn't been, hasn't had any improvements at all done to it. However, it's still there and it's space that's available. And what better way to try it out than to actually have an event on that street, see how it goes? So, that's what the Jamboree is proposing, is to have their event there. Obviously, that necessitates closing down the street, which requires a resolution from this council. And the way we've set it, structured it, is that it would be closed, public works would close down the street starting at eight AM on Tuesdays. And then it would be closed until noon the following day. And that is, that is more time than the Jamboree asked for. But it's mainly to give public works sufficient time to get things taken care of, cleaned up afterward and shut down, just to make sure that we have enough time to have it all run smoothly. Thirteenth, this is just for a single block of Thirteenth Avenue between Main Street and Long Street. And it does not, I mean, it will have an impact when it comes to getting into that parking lot. However, that parking lot to the east is accessible from other streets. So, it's not going to keep anybody from being able to get to a business or be able to park.
Questions, the council?
I have a question. Having had events in parking lots and watched people drive around cones and not be paying attention to what's going on and driving in areas, will there be any cement barriers to protect walking and standing population?
Going to punt that over to Greg.
So, the discussion was with Blair and myself that would be similar to what Jamboree uses. We have plastic containers that are about, I want to say, a couple hundred pounds, hundred pounds empty. You can link them together. We will set them at the end at Long on Thirteenth. And then on Main Street, we will fill them with water. Each one of those barricades then become about eleven hundred pounds. You link five or six of them together, a car will not be able to drive through them without distracting or at least slowing it down. My concern is cars coming wanting to make that immediate right off Main Street, a little bit faster speed, maybe. And I think we've kind of talked about that to leave that barrier up prior to everybody setting up and giving us that extra time to leave it there while we're taking everything down. And it just creates that safety barrier.
Was there going to be any signage or anything so that people?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to, I think, just to meet the requirements. No right turn, whether it's temporary, we'll have event signage similar to other events that we have around here. So.
We want to do these things. We want to do them right to make sure we have no horrible history associated with them. And so, I applaud that plan. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor. So, Blair, have we talked with the businesses impacted by this?
The one business that would be, there are two businesses that would be impacted the most. One would be the liquor store and the other would be Steelhead Fitness. I've spoken with Dave Bauer previously about the, at Steelhead Fitness, about the festival street idea. And, but I have not spoken with him specifically about these events. I'm not sure, Robert, did you reach out at all by any chance?
So, what about Sandy and Feed because they get their deliveries there?
We will be making sure that they don't have, I'll reach out to them and make sure that Tuesdays aren't a problem for them.
Mr. Mayor, I do think it's a great idea to start with an event like this, to see if this will work. And I do appreciate the thoughtfulness in the plan so far.
Any further discussions? Yeah, any council directive?
So moved as recommended. Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Or Tim Gerson?
I'm going to vote no on this because the businesses have not been contacted yet.
Okay. At the record show, we have six ayes, one nay, approval of Resolution Number Sixteen for 2022. Moving on now for RCA Travel Reimbursement for City Manager Candidates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a RCA before you tonight to consider travel reimbursement for your upcoming city manager candidates. Tonight, we're asking you to decide whether to pay for travel expenses just for the candidates themselves. This would be for the final interviews that would take place on June eighth. Or whether you also want to reimburse costs that would be associated with them bringing a spouse or a guest to the interviews. And whether you want to set a cap on that compensation for the reimbursement and required receipts for those. The reimbursements that could be considered would include economy airfare for the out-of-state candidates, car rental, parking fees, meals, lodging, and/or mileage reimbursement. We've outlined several options for you on page fifty-seven of your packet. The first is that you would not authorize any reimbursements. The second option would be to authorize reimbursement for the candidate only and for authorized travel expenses up to a specific dollar amount upon the submission of receipts. The third option would be to authorize reimbursement for the candidates and a guest for actual authorized travel expenses up to X amount per candidate. And the fourth option is to authorize a one-time travel reimbursement of a flat sum to any candidate traveling from out-of-state and a flat sum to an Oregon resident traveling over a hundred miles to attend the interviews. So, we're looking for direction from you. And I think my recommendation would be that you consider, if you do have a finalist, and the finalists, we're thinking will be two, probably no more than three finalists. uh, for that final round of interviews. And my suggestion would be that you would consider, um, something more, um, in alignment with what the costs may be in today's market for traveling for airfare, et cetera. And, um, so my recommendation would be around a $1,000 cap for those managers traveling from out of state. It could be, yeah.
We do need to give some help for sure. But an airplane, uh, flight these days is not cheap either. So that, that, that'd be my only concern. I think it's the right thing to do, so.
So would, um, something in the lines of looking at option number four with a thousand dollars for somebody coming from out of state and possibly, um, a maximum of 250 for somebody traveling over a hundred dollars? That, or excuse me, a hundred miles? And then that way, if they had to stay in a hotel, they've got their reimbursement. They've got food, they've got, I think, no more than 250.
You, in, in response to that, you may have some candidates from far reaches of the state like Counselor Trask mentioned. And, um, just the mileage alone could be beyond the $250. And that wouldn't give them the opportunity to be able to spend the night in the community, uh, like the other out of state candidates.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, um, I don't know, maybe something like a thousand and then 500 for in-state? Reasonable?
Or you might, you might consider just authorizing a flat sum per candidate. Um, and from that list of eligible expenses. So if you did have somebody traveling, say from far east part of Oregon and they chose to fly here, um, that might actually be less expensive than the mileage reimbursement, depending on how far they're traveling. Uh, so we could look at that. You, you might want to just set it at the same rate for any candidate.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, I don't really like spending a lot of money, but I actually think that if we gave them a little bit more, then maybe they could use some of that money to go to restaurants in town or, or spend it locally. So I think covering a little bit more than just their actual expenses might benefit the community some as well.
I think I'd be more comfortable with a thousand for somebody traveling from out of state and go with the 500 for somebody in-state.
I agree.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so, um, I need a council directive.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to authorize a one-time travel reimbursement of a thousand dollars to any candidate traveling from out of state and $500 to an Oregon resident traveling over a hundred miles.
I'll second it.
Uh, motion second for option four of the mount stated by roll call, please.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yep.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, approval of option number four of, of a thousand dollars for traveling out and 500 for Oregon residents for our candidates. Um, moving on now for RCA Resolution Number 17 for 2022, Sweet Home High School Senior Parade.
This is another, uh, street closure request. Um, the Chamber of Commerce is working with the high school on, uh, holding an event for the, um, the seniors, this senior procession. This is, uh, the, their application was for a parade, but it's technically not a parade. It's a procession. Um, and so it's not, their whole route doesn't need to be closed down. It is, it is cars traveling there and following traffic rules. Um, and I believe they've, they're, I don't know if they've talked to you, Jeff, but they're interested in a police escort and, and uh, whatever the fire district can do as well. But, um, this is, they have requested the closure of 22nd between Mountain View Road and Long Street for staging, uh, of the procession. And then they would move on from there along their route. And so this, uh, resolution would be for the closure of that area from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM on June 9th. And, uh, the residential access would still be allowed during that time.
Any questions of council?
Mr. Mayor? Uh, so there will be expenses to this? I'm sure, public work expenses, are they going to be covered by the chamber?
The, so the, the special event permit would include, would have to include the using the, uh, you know, Public Works equipment to block off the road and, and staff time. The council does have the option of waiving such fees, uh, to support events like this, but this, um, there wasn't anything in their application specifically requesting that.
It, it says it will be installed by the Public Works Department.
Yes, but they didn't ask for a, a fee waiver to my knowledge, but that's certainly within council's, uh, discretion. It, I, my guess would be that they neglected to uh, put that in. I, I believe they would be interested the waiving of those fees.
Any other discussion or questions of council?
Yeah, absolutely. This is going to be the proposed third year of it and it began two years ago during COVID when they couldn't have the, uh, walking procession for the high school. And I think the last two years, um, I know that Public Works has been involved with just helping, uh, line out some of the cones, uh, for staging of the vehicles. And I don't believe there was any, um, fees associated with it during those times, just for future, uh, for past historical reference.
Any questions, counsel? Yeah.
Set in the seventies?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sixty.
Well, so that was.
So, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I think it's a, a good idea. I really like the idea. But I do feel that because we're going to have personnel working after hours, it looks like. Um, is that correct, Greg?
Yeah, last year we had a couple employees setting cones and then tearing them down. It, so there's a little bit of time involved.
It, there's still finances involved in this. And, um, I'm not comfortable waiving the fees for it, but I like the event. So if there's some way we can manage it, I would do that.
I think it's a good event. I think it's a good way of recognizing our students that are going through high school and and getting diplomas and achieving it and them being recognized for it. So I think it's a great, great thing.
I think if it was organized, we could supply cones. We've done that for other events and other organizations in town where they come and we check out 20, 30 cones and, uh, they do their thing. And, uh, the only differences, and I'll refer to Chief, that it is on city streets and, uh, so.
You have any input on this, Chief?
Absolutely. Uh, and, and I'll nominate, uh, Captain Ogden and myself. We don't get overtime. We'll, we'll help, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll set out the, the cones and remove them.
We appreciate that, Chief.
That said, do we have a council directive?
So moved as recommended.
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
By the record show, seven ayes, no nays, approval of Resolution Number 17 for 2022. Up next is discussion only, sweet home, uh, excuse me, sportsman holiday fireworks display. And I know we have a couple gentleman back here that probably is here to answer any questions we may have, so I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Uh, yes, the, uh, Chief Lynn has convened a meeting, a community meeting really, uh, to talk about this, uh, event. And I'm going to turn it over to him to lead the discussion tonight because he's really taken a leadership role in bringing us all together. Thank you, Chief.
Oh, I appreciate that. And I would like to introduce, and I'm not sure if they want to come up, but, um, uh, Chief Tyler and Jeff Mather back there with the Sweet Home Fire and Ambulance Volunteers Association. I don't know if either of you want to come up or if there's questions, uh, that I can't answer. They probably have some of the answers. Um, as we all know, the, the fireworks display is coming up, um, and we, it is going to be held at the same location down at Quarry Park, uh, off of Zelkova. And so the big question started arising is whether, with, with some of COVID bans, uh, lifting, whether we're going to allow parking down at the, that facility and the public down there. Last year, the first year it was held down there, there was no really public allowed down there. The fire, fire personnel were down there setting them off. And we tried to establish areas around town that were, were clearly visible. Um, some worked, some didn't. And so there's been, um, a lot of chatter on whether to open up that area for, uh, community members to, one, go down there and two, park down there uh, for the, for the event to get a, a front row seat. And so that's what we had, uh, last Tuesday, we had a, um, um, a meeting with a number of the involved parties as far as the fire department themselves, Volunteer Association with the Fire Department, uh, the Chamber of Commerce and really to try to address, are we going to allow parking down there to park or not to park? And that was the, the question. Um, I think there is a lot of, uh, desire to, uh, allow people down there to park. But the real question came back to who's going to be responsible and who's going to manage that parking aspect. And so, um, uh, a couple organizations were, were thrown out there as far as who may or may not be able to handle it. I know I won't speak for them, but from the fire standpoint and the Volunteer Association that they just don't have the staffing by putting on the event itself and by, or by, uh, lighting the, the fireworks themselves and staffing the engines that are necessary to make sure it's a safe, safe environment down there. And, and also to cover the district, they just felt like they didn't have enough personnel to do it. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce was, uh, somewhat in the same boat. They didn't feel like they had enough personnel that could, that could manage that type of, uh, event, uh, at least at this time. Now, I know, uh, Robert's sitting here and, uh, Shettig and some of the, the organizations such as that, uh, at least Shettig was mentioned as perhaps their one that would be able to assist in, uh, assist in, that's the wrong word, to, uh, be responsible and manage that, uh, that community event, because it would be a community event down there. And, and also Rotary has stepped forward within, uh, a willingness that if nobody else would do it, to step forward. So I guess it really came down to a, um, a question for council as to whether council was comfortable allowing that venue, the Quarry Park area, to be used, uh, for parking and, uh, managed parking and allowing people to, uh, community members to be in the area while the fireworks are being shot off. Um, had a lot of discussion, um, and we, really, we were hoping to tackle this a little earlier, but we kind of pushed the, the topic off until, uh, the new fire chief could, uh, come on board. So he has some skin in the, in, in the game and he can't just point fingers at the end. Um, so we waited a little bit and so, um, there's a lot that I think can happen down there. Um, ingress and egress has been a concern that many have pointed out. There is truly, really only one way in and out of the Quarry Park. Um, that road itself, even through the, the gate, uh, the road's 19 feet, so it gives plenty of room for, um, in and out traffic in essence, two lanes. Many of the, the, uh, community roads in Sweet Home are either 10-foot lanes or eight-foot lanes. So we do have quite, we do have enough room to get people in and out. Um, uh, lighting and visibility were, were also a concern that some pointed out, pointed out. And I know, uh, Chief, uh, Tyler has, has offered the use of the, uh, one of the, their trucks, again, assuming it doesn't have to go somewhere, uh, to, uh, assist with lighting. I'm, I'm looking at him now. I'm sure that's still, uh, correct. And so we've talked about a lot of, uh, contingencies, but it really comes down to is, uh, would the council be comfortable if an organization stepped forward with the insurance and the, um, willingness to accept the management responsibility of it to allow for people to park down there and, um, watch from down there? Now, the, I know that, um, uh, as staff, we have looked at how many vehicles we, we could safely get down there. A lot of input was from, um, uh, Public Works Department, who's more familiar with the site. Um, between 200 and 240 vehicles, somewhere along that line. I figure they could do, uh, spots and, and safely put that many vehicles down there without really having to do much, uh, much additional work down there on that site.
Questions of council?
Gee, it's too bad. We don't have somebody who knows how to play music and have toilets there for an event like this. It's crazy. Hi.
I can hear the end of the day about some of this and, and it might be to our advantage to possibly have people bust down there and then bring them out if that was a possibility. Just taking the chairs and then definitely be nice.
And, and actually I should go, go back. We have talked about having, uh, the chambers talked about assisting us with, uh, getting, uh, porta potties restrooms down there as well as, um, some collection terminals. And we haven't approached the shuttle service yet, but we were kind of waiting until to see if it was even an option to encourage people to bust down there rather than. And the, the intent would be to, um, create this as a, as a fundraiser to help support, uh, the programs in, in Sweet Home from the, uh, the future fireworks itself.
In my discussion with our city manager, there, I'm all for the parking, but I had questions for our city manager and she can maybe give her feedback on those. Um, again, I'm all for the parking, but the two questions was our liability, where we stood with that property. And the second part is the assurance of the egresses to be able to get out in case of an emergency. If you only have one egress and all of a sudden a fire breaks out with that egress, how are they going to get out? And, and fire travels fast, so uh, there'd be a concern of the liability and the egress. So some kind of an assurance that they got that covered.
I think any, oh, words.
Come up, Jeff. We just need you're in the hot seat.
Wildland standpoint, the, uh, the gravel that is there is more than enough to, uh, be a safety zone in any wildland facility. So with the vegetation that's around that, so I understand that concern, but this is the wildland man himself.
Yeah, uh, we've looked at that site, um, even in, um, the time of year, it's going to be the fire risk down there is very low. Um, with the, the, all the water that's down there, it's going to be the relative humidity down there is going to really not support fire um, from burning. Um, and talking with, uh, Chief Barringer, um, it sounds like last year the city did a good job at, uh, doing some abatement and got, got rid of some problem weeds. And I think they had one small weed catch fire last year. So from a fire standpoint, it, it is a really safe area. And the, the fire potential down there is going to be relatively low. So, and we can, as we get closer, we can, you know, do some weather forecasts and look at that more. Uh, but I don't have any major concerns for a big fire event down there.
Okay. Thank you. Again, it's now comes back to the liability, uh, city manager.
So the fire district has, um, they do have to have insurance to, um, uh, have the fireworks. And so they've taken on that liability already. Um, it's one of the requirements to get the It's one of the requirements to get the permit, and we would be looking to one of the supporting agencies to provide us with additional liability insurance that covered the parking for that evening. And of course, the city is always, would also have some liability in, in that we're holding a community event on city-owned property. There are concerns with the access in and out of the property because it's not fully developed and it's, but everyone on staff assures us that, you know, this is a doable event if the council is supportive and, and wants to allow the public to access that. Of course, when you do that, you continue to have additional people that want to continually use the property, and so that you have to think about that moving into the future, how much you want to have events down there until we're able to see some development on site. But the decision really is yours.
Do you have a plan to separate people out of their vehicles and in chairs and stuff from where the vehicles are, so we don't have an incident with people getting ran over?
Absolutely, it would be separated off, and the, the standing seating area, if you call it, wherever people would, would choose to gather, if they're not in the back of a pickup or vehicle, would be separated and barriers would be installed. I don't, I'm not sure if it's going to be solid barriers, but it would be definitely some barrier, some type of barrier material.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, again, I really like this idea because this is property that's been in city hands for a long time, and to be able to use it for something for the community, because it's the community's property, and the fact that the police department and the fire district are both speaking into the safety of this, I'm, I'm for this idea, I like this.
People would try to come up the back road, get too close to. It's a little more difficult down there because it's kind of cold. Trees and stuff everywhere, but that, that's not the problem, I think the egress would be the biggest problem. But then the other thing is alcohol. They don't allow that down there. I, I don't know how we could.
I can't, I can't vouch for any other agency, but I would say no, and the intent was to not allow everybody down there early. It would be a couple hours before the display itself, access would be granted, so hopefully it would minimize any alcohol that's consumed down there.
I, I think it's going to be easier to let people in and manage them than trying to keep them out. And so I think having the bathrooms and a plan is better than no plan.
I think you have a full consensus to move forward with this, I don't think there's any objection of any of the councillors here. This was not an RCA, so do we want to go ahead and push an RCA just to make sure it's on record for one as such?
Yes, we'll bring one to you in the future for approval, but we didn't want to move forward without the consent that you wanted to allow access onto the property.
Okay, I'd say go ahead and bring forth with an RCA regarding this, so, thank you. Thanks for all that came this evening from the fire department and answering some questions. Waste Water Treatment Plant Project 1A Revised.
Thank you, Mayor, council, we have an RCA in front of you tonight, it's got several things, but let's back up to last meeting. We talked about the issues we were having with our financing opposed to, for, for the whole project, for Phase One and Phase Two, and that our loan providers don't want a lot of those, those projects to intertwine financially. The discussion was is that we would do a condensed Phase One, and that we would come back to you with what that would look like, and that would stay in our budget and we'd be able to use the funds, city's funds to complete the Phase One. We looked as a team, we looked at about six different options, most of them didn't fit within our budget. We had settled in on Scenario Six. The issue with Scenario Six, which you guys have in front of you, you have a Scenario One and a Scenario Six. The issues with Scenario Six is that although we completed the plant site, we were going to get a shell of a building A, we're going to get a shell of a building B, we were going to get some main electrical and blower, a blower building, we were going to get some electrical instrumentation and controls. We were going to pre-purchase the standby generator, the screw press, bar screens and associated equipment with that. And we would have moved forward with this, and, and the discussion became, what are we getting out of that, out of that Phase One? Are we getting anything that's operational? And the answer is no, we got a lot of stuff that's ready to be constructed when Phase Two happens and then other contractor comes in. But we didn't have anything tangible, like we got capacity out of it, we got a new generator, we were able to use that building in some form or fashion. We dug a little bit deeper, we met as a team, Brandon was involved with that, Christie and, and the engineering team, they're all here today. We settled on a, back on Scenario One, the problem with Scenario One, it was slightly outside of our budget. And so with some creative thinking, and that's kind of why this RCA is here for you tonight, we've moved some things around and kind of made the Scenario One work, and what you get with Scenario One is the site cleared, you're going to get the entire Influent Pump Station, the IPS, so we're going to put a new pump station in, you're going to get the force mains, you're going to get the backbone, you're going to get the main electrical building, excuse me, you're going to get the main electrical and blower building, you're going to get electrical instrumentation and controls, you're going to get the standby generator that would be functional to run everything that we have. Then in Phase Two, we'll move the building, the primaries and all the other components that will be constructed as one phase and Phase Two under one financing. The RCA tonight, let, let me go over some of the recommendations, is obviously we do nothing, and we, with Scenario Six and presented and spend less lines to try to meet that, that bottom line or that budget. We can move to redistribute the one million of ARPA funds from the water treatment plant generator to help offset that and get us in that budget. We could also direct, city council, direct staff to re-scenarios and find an option that better fits the desired city council. The team has already looked at six scenarios. We feel this is the best option, we get something tangible out of it, if we're to sit a couple of years, it's still something that is working. If you recall our last rain event, we had some issues with our generator, with loadings, it was intermittently shutting on and off. We understand what caused that, aged pumps was drawing more hurts than what the generator could put out, so it kept kicking it off. I think we had four or five staff members out till about midnight, two in the morning that, that night. So we feel out of all the scenarios, this is the best option, we get something tangible, we're spending, we're getting tied up into that, that twelve million with all of our, with all of our design costs, but we feel this is the scenario that we should go with. Also with that, and this just changed today or yesterday, I think there was some discussion with Brandon and Christie, and maybe let Christie kind of chime in on that with the legislation appropriation. But we're asking tonight to move through with Option Two, and to give our Pro Tim city manager the ability to move with that scenario, to authorize her as well to submit a fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-three Direct Legislation Appropriation Information Form to Business Oregon. And I'll ask for any questions, I also have the team here, if you want to talk more about what we're getting with apples and apples here.
Questions to council?
We talked taking money from other water projects, and we felt that the other work was more important because the generator's only needed when the power's out it. We need this other stuff to make the plant run right. So it was the worst of evil, I guess.
I know there was some discussion of generator grants out there, other options, is any other thoughts of how we can go after some money for a generator all over and above?
Yeah, so we, we have been working, and you've heard this, I've talked about this multiple times, that we have been interacting with a, with PAC Power about the resiliency program that they have. There is a meeting set up for June first, they finally have gotten back to us, we're going to have actually PAC Power people at the pit table, not their third-party consultant. They'll be present as well, but we're going to have that discussion of what they can conceive to actually bring to the table for this, and they are interested. We will have to have some skin in the game, I don't know what that is yet. That million dollars was part of that, part of that skin in the game. But it's not something that's going to happen next year, right? This is going to be two years, three years down the road, we hope we do it sooner. But if we move these funds, we're going to have to kick that project down another year and another year until we find those funds. I don't think we let the project go away, I just think, as you guys say, we kicked the can down a little bit. But it's, it's like we're trying to find the money to do the work, so.
Well, I, I firmly feel we need to keep moving forward, as we talked about, and furthermore, I honestly, I know inflation's hitting us and, but I don't, we can't, I don't see inflation being long-term, I hope not, you know, no magic crystal ball, but I know Americans can't sustain inflation forever, so I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, that the cost of goods and everything will come down the next year or two, and something happens that, that does happen, so we can only hopefully bank on that. Any questions, council? Council Directive.
Mr. Mayor, I move to redistribute one million dollars in American Rescue Plan Act funds from the Water Treatment Plant Generator Project to the Waste Water Treatment Plant Project, approved Project 1A Scenario One, and authorize the city manager Pro Tim to submit the fiscal year twenty-one through twenty-three Direct Legislative Appropriation Information Form to Business Oregon. Second.
I have an motion, second by roll call, please.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Trask. Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Pro Tim Gerson.
Yes.
Let the record show seven eyes, no nays, approval of the Waste Treatment Plant Project 1A Revised. Moving on to ordinance bills, we have nothing for first reading, we have a second reading, ordinance bill number three by two thousand and twenty-two, Zone Map Amendment, by title only.
Ordinance Bill Number Three for two thousand and twenty-two, ordinance number blank, and ordinance amending official zoning map.
Any questions to council? Okay. And this is a second reading, so I need a council directive to move it to third reading.
So moved as recommended.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Pro Tim Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Trask. Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Let the record show seven eyes, no nays, approval of moving this forward to third and final reading on our next council meeting, June fourteenth, by title only. Reports of committees, any report from committee members?
Mr. Mayor, we, we approved two YAC members tonight. I would like you to appoint T. Barrera to the city council, she has requested that position.
I would say, let's go ahead and do that.
Thank you.
I'm glad we're getting some youth involved in our, in our YAC, that's kind of cool. Any other committee member reports? Okay, mayor's report Thursday is a reminder, I don't know, probably still our city managers report, but reminder, we have twelve forty-five starting the interviews, so as a reminder, all councils, I have nothing to further to report. City manager.
Yes, this is your reminder, twelve forty-five, Thursday, be there, please. Beyond that, we have a work session scheduled for May thirty-first to talk about the future development of the Quarry Site, so that's very exciting to hear that there's a plan that we're going to be talking about for the future development of that location. And finally, tonight, I wanted to wish Counselor Coleman a happy birthday.
Mr. Mayor, it has come to my attention, unfortunately, today, I let our temporary city manager know that I have a, a conflict on Thursday that I cannot get out of, and so with that, I am going to be in DC on the thirty-first, and so I can't be at that either, I deeply apologize.
Deeply noted, thank you for letting us know, so, sorry you can't make it here. Giving back to Counselor Coleman, happy birthday. Well, we can sing if anybody wants to, I mean, the fire department, the fire department has left. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, can you, no. Happy birthday to you. Now, we would bring, light the candles, but there's fire departments left, so. No, it's celebration. Okay, moving on, department directors' reports, anything for the department directors? And anything the department directors want to bring up?
I was just going to say that it's interesting that we think we solve one problem and we get another one pops up for Chief, it just seems like you.
That feels like my life right now, yeah.
I know, it's really interesting.
We'll join the club here.
Because we are seeing those RVs everywhere again.
Yeah, many believe it's the, their answer, and I don't think it's their answer, I think it's a short-sighted answer, but.
So are we going to have to come up with a plan?
One at a time.
Okay.
I'm not sure on this, and many communities are battling this too, and most far worse than we are, so we're very extremely thankful that, you know, we, we only have what we have, and we'll just try to keep tabs on it.
The other thing I wanted to comment was on those thirty-five mile an hour signs on Highway twenty, I was noticing that people are going fifty, fifty-five, and then they see those signs almost out in the middle of the road and the brake lights go on, so they, they do work.
They do, and it, it's been a challenge for people to adjust their speed to that, I mean, it was always a challenge to get people to adjust their speed to forty-five and thirty-five, so, so it's getting better, a little bit better.
I've seen a lot of OSP and you guys on Main Street lately, and I think it's really helped, so, yeah.
No, keep up the good work, Chief. City Attorney was not here this evening, I think he was ill, so just as FYI, council business good of order, anything?
Mr. Mayor. I was just going to ask Christie, do you have any sort of update from the question that I had about Pleasant Valley and the sidewalk construction, obstructions for the line of sight, safety concerns?
I don't have an update for you, other than city staff did make contact with the state of Oregon and the project manager in charge to notify them of the concerns that we had with traffic. I know Counselor Trask came in and expressed his concerns as well with the safety at that intersection, and so we'll definitely follow up on that for you.
I was thinking OSP was outside of there, helping slow them down at least from coming into town, but they still have the same barricades up, and it's still very difficult to get in and out of there, so I was just wondering. So I made a complaint, I don't know if we can do anything about it, but even those barricades that have open spot in between them, like the little temporary fence, instead of the full orange and white barricade, so you can maybe at least see through, instead of not see anything at all, then you can see traffic coming and going. Not that you can do anything about it, but I can only see out of my dump truck, I can't see out of the car or the truck, and it's already dangerous as it is, so I was just hoping we got somewhere.
Is it something a flagger would help?
That's what I asked him, and they, he said, yeah, ODOT, the, ODOT, the guy I talked to, was the guy that runs the place there, he said that if they put in one there, they have to put one in First Avenue, they have to put one down east of Highway twenty, and it gets crazy. It's crazy, but it's the right thing to do. Yes, absolutely. At least one. One could stop the traffic down going, going west. I don't know, I was not happy, and they knew it.
So they have made some adjustments that I've noticed, and, and I concern how they've actually made pedestrians go out in the further part of the road to go around instruction you would think you'd want to protect, but they have traffic control standards that they follow when they do this, and they have to adhere to those. I think what they did is they pinched that over and left the two lanes over, and you really couldn't see around there, and people couldn't get around that. I saw this, this, on Monday, that they had taken that down to one lane and pushed everybody off the third lane or in the slow lane over to the fast lane, trying to turn off a valley back highway, and because they had pitched it down to one lane, they're open, there's just car after car after car, and it's even making it more difficult now. And that's made it clearer coming into town, but people coming off of Pleasant Valley are, I think, restricted, you're going to start seeing some things backed up there. I just hope we get everything done sooner than late. They're moving along, so.
The people that have been around for very long, and Chief would know this, how many wrecks we've had, how many people have had awful wrecks there, because they can't get across, there's, there's no way. When White, White's Electronics was there, they, they split their times up, so one of them went home at three thirty, another one went home at four o'clock, which helped a lot, but now they're not there anymore. But it's, it's a horrible intersection. We begged them to put up a light, and they just won't do it, so.
And I do know there's, there was a conversation and email stream going out through the project manager, through ODOT and their, their representatives, and some of these are, they're trying to address some of the, the concerns as they're doing the construction.
The place to go is OSHA. Those are the ones that will fail them. I used to take the flagging class when I was employed. The person that did that class said that ODOT is the absolute worst. They don't follow the rules at all, anyway, so. Well, we beat that up, that's good enough.
I have a positive.
Oh, you do?
I noticed that there's some hero banners going up, and they look awesome. And kudos to the Rotary for taking that on with the city, and also, it is not lost on me how much energy and work is being done and gone through this council tonight with the staff, and they're staying on top of all of it, and I'm very impressed.
I agree. Anything other than council business good of order? If not, adjourn at eight oh seven.